We'll call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hanson.
Here.
Trustee Doro.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
President Parnashto.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Walshauger.
Here.
At this time, if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Swenson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda, or not the first item, I should say, but at this time, if anybody from the public wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda, feel free to move towards the podium. Seeing as there are none, we will move on to our first item on the agenda, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of June 25th, 2018, and the committee of the whole minutes of June 27th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved by Trustee Myers, seconded by Trustee Swenson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
I move we pay the bills for 314, 479, 47 cents.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Landwehr, seconded by Swenson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
That motion is carried. Got it. Next items that we have coming up are consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. At this time, we have the application as listed for approvals of the bartender's, operator's licenses as listed.
I make a motion to approve the bartender operator's licenses listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Trustee Walshauger and Trustee Doro to approve the licenses as listed that are recommended for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, part of the operator's licenses that are consideration of applications for operator's licenses that have been recommended for denial. We will take each one of these separately, as we have typically done, and I am getting to the paperwork, so bear with me. I'm very sorry. I don't know what the bookmarks set up. So... The first bartender's license expiring June 30th, 2020, that is applied for, that's recommended for denial, is Dustin Pfeifer. Anybody that is here to speak to that can come forward now to speak to that license if you so choose.
I'm Tom Lucky, president of the Heartland Athletic Advancement Association. We submitted the license for Dusty, and it got approved, but we feel that Dusty, you know, has been a real good member of our community for, you know, years and years. He had, you know, run-ins like a lot of people do, but for the last eight years at least, he's been just solid and down by us. He works hard. His employers tell me how hard he works all the time, and there's no reason that I can see that he should be denied based on how long it's been since he was in trouble, you know? Everybody changes. Dusty's changed. I've changed, you know? You don't hold something against someone forever and ever and ever because they, you know, slipped up in the past. That's, to me, that's just, you know, give them a chance. What we do down there is not like, anything like a typical bar. A lot of people here know how we operate. We sell beer and malt beverage, but no hard liquor. So, we're open, you know, anywhere from four to five hours a night, and it's not a real, you know, it's just, got people coming and going, playing softball. Dusty takes really good care of the customers. Everybody loves the way he takes care of them, you know? I'm their supervising, of course, now, but they'd rather have him work. So, I, you know, he's very attentive. He's really good with people, and the kids all love him, you know? I mean, he's always there for the kids. Guy's just, you know, he's really turned around from his past, which is a long time ago, so I don't see any reason, you know, that he should be denied the opportunity to continue making himself a better member of the community. To me, it's, you know, it's just one little step. The more, you know, the more people, you know, that do this get the opportunity to make themselves a better member of the community, a better member of the community they become. And, you know, to me, he's just, lately, he's just been doing everything right. Down by us, he's absolutely phenomenal, you know? Does everything I ask of him. He's there every time he's supposed to be working. He does what he's, you know, supposed to do, you know, what he's supposed to get done. And, you know, little by little, he's really been coming around, so...
May I ask you, why didn't he fill out the application, and why isn't he here tonight? Why aren't you doing it for him?
Well, Dusty's here.
Oh, okay.
But I was, I'm the president, so I figured I'd step up first, you know? And, you know, he can, he can step up and, you know, say what he wants, but I just, you know, we've submitted the application because, you know, he's a good worker, and he's, like I say, he's been nothing but a joy down there to have around, so... Everybody, you know, like I say, everybody changes, so... And one of the things that, you know, when I talked to Ross about the application was, he said, "Well, you know, we don't hold people's past against them once it's, you know, beyond a few years or whatever," and, you know, he wants to, wants to see, you know, everybody have the opportunity to, you know, make a couple extra dollars and become a member of the community, but then I got the letter that said that, you know, well, based on his past, he's, that he was refused. So, it confused me, to say the least, but, really, past be the past. What's in the present right now, that's what I see, and I see him just doing a lot of good. So, that's why, if we, if we didn't feel, if we didn't feel that he could do this job and help and be, you know, good at it, and actually, I've seen him be better at it than other people, you know? If he sees someone that he doesn't recognize, which he knows most of the people down there on Tuesday night, he's the first one to say, "ID?" You know, "You gotta have ID." And if, you know, they look like they're under 30, he doesn't recognize them, they, you know, "Well, it's in my car." "Well, you gotta go get it," you know? Seen him do it multiple times, so... But usually, they, they come back with it. There's, most of the people down there are 30 or over now, you know, so... Especially the, he works the girls' softball night, and most of the, most of that is women that are 30 to 35 plus. There's a few that are in their twenties, but a lot of them are older anyway, so... But that's, you know, that's what I feel, and like I say, I've lived in this community for 50-plus years, you know? Dick's known my family forever, and, you know, I wouldn't be up here, I wouldn't be up here arguing his case if I didn't think he was worth it, so... That's what I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeifer, do you want to say anything, or are you?
I think Tom said everything that we need to say.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity, so thank you.
All right. I'm not, I would defer to the administrator on that question. Did you hear it?
Well, it is in your packet, so, I mean, that material is, you know, technically available publicly.
Public. Right.
I would, you know...
Because it isn't just one past issue.
You're right. It isn't. It's been, I think, according to the memo, what, six and a half years since the last alcohol-related issue? I don't know if it's worth asking a directed question to Mr. Pfeifer, if he's willing to answer, that goes to what I was talking about in my memo about the rehabilitation concept and what are the, what things have changed to allow him to stand here and say that it's, whatever was the demon at that time is under control. It's an opportunity for the village board to consider that if they wish to and make a decision.
Anything else?
I just have, is your, let me just go back here to the, do you currently, is your vehicle currently registered?
Yes, ma'am.
And your driving license is current?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you have insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Well, I don't know, because a motion hasn't been made, so I'm careful. For myself, this one is, number one, this is only the second meeting while I've been serving, that we've had to deal with denials, but it's also the only denial that has been brought forward that isn't necessarily directly related to an offense previously that had to do with alcohol, not 100 percent. And while I do have a hard time sometime interpreting the law, Ross Calera, or Chief Calera, interim Chief Calera, has alluded to that in the past, it is difficult to interpret the law because there's almost two separate parts to it. What can we do? What can we not do? Based on the advice of the attorney, the way I understand it, is that one part of the law makes it very simple that it's like, hey, if you're getting, if you have any contact with the police of a negative nature, it's not good for you. And then there's another part of the law that seems to indicate that it has to be very specifically for a certain reason that you cannot get the license on which we got the village attorney's email. I myself always defer with a lot of weight to what our police department recommends. They're doing their job by looking into the past and to the history. One thing that's very difficult for me with, in this situation, is that the recommendation for denial isn't for alcohol-related offenses, and not only just that, but I'll add to it, in multiple times of getting, having contacts with police in the last year, if, in having multiple traffic contacts with the police, though they weren't positive contacts, there was nothing alcohol-related, and to myself, that indicates that there's not a continue, continued practice of what may have happened years ago by getting behind the wheel and being intoxicated. That doesn't mean that I'm right. I also want to strongly say that when I say that statement, that I get behind the police department's recommendations and take that with an extremely heavy, it sways my opinion a lot. This situation is different simply because there isn't an alcohol-related offense within the last six years plus. That's just a statement that I wanted to make for myself. This one was very difficult for me. That was my, that I yield the floor to anybody else that would want to speak to it. Before I yield the floor, I'm going to, I respect our police department. I always say that I do, and I just, the police department is doing their job and looking into the background and making sure to keep us safe. It's not personal with anyone, and I think that our police officers and everybody in the leadership and authority in the police department would state that. I just want to express my, I hold in very high value everything our police department does. This is not President Fanner still going against the police department. It's a slight difference of opinion, and I think we all have them, and even within the police department, I'm sure there's some times that they are, but I just want to offer my utmost respect. I don't want this turned into something it's not.
The only problem that I have is the recent traffic offenses, although they did not involve alcohol, indicate a continuing disregard for the law. Now, it's not the alcohol law, but it's a law. And so that's my problem with it.
Anybody else want to speak to this? If no one else has any discussion to it, a motion would be entertained for whichever motion someone on the board would like to make.
I don't know what way this is going to go, so I would encourage you to make a motion, if you're going to make one, in the positive. That is, make a motion to award or issue the license, because it's very clear in that instance, if it should fail, what the result is. The opposite is not true if the motion is made in the negative and it fails.
Gotcha.
Okay? So if there is uncertainty amongst the board members, I would encourage you to make that motion in the positive.
And what the administrator's saying here, I'm just jumping in because I want to make it very clear, as you've just done. He's saying, no one knows which way this may go, depending on the way people want to vote, so he's saying, to make it clearer to the public and everyone sitting here and viewing, make a motion in the positive, and then people can vote the way that they, they would like to, or the affirmative. And then people can vote the way they like to. That's the suggestion, not a bad one.
Then I'll move that we grant him his license back.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the operator's license to Mr. Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion, we may need, we may need, okay, that's been abstained. We will need a roll call on this, so, Trustee Walshauger.
No.
Trustee Swenson. A no would be to deny, a yea...
Wait, wait, wait. Say that again?
A no would be to deny.
Deny, okay. No.
A yea would be to grant.
Okay.
No.
No. Trustee Landwehr.
I abstain.
Trustee Hanson.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Myers. I would say yes. Four yeses, one abstention, and two denials. That license has been granted. Next on the list, we have Kelsey Lean. This also is another license that has been put forth for, and been recommended for denial by the police department, and looking into the background, to be straight with you, this person was issued a citation at 20 years old on 1/27/18 that puts it well within the one year of Heartland's typical policy of alcohol-related offenses within the year.
I move that we deny the license.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on Kelsey Lean's license? All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
All opposed? That license is denied. Next, we have a license that has been recommended for denial, based on looking into the past, for Michelle Lehman. We've all received stuff in our packet, if people, if we, I mean, if no one needs it. This is another one that, sorry, I've been, this is another one that has had, if I'm not mistaken, oh, this is a little different, I'm sorry. Yeah, this one, there's just been a lot of police interaction of a negative nature that has to do with, I am going to include it, and alcohol, for my own opinion, I'm letting everyone know that. We're talking substance here, mind-altering substance, okay? Alcohol and illegal drugs, legal alcohol or illegal drugs. In this case, there was even a situation where at 20 years old, this person was already trying to get involved in substance, and there has been a continued wanting to be involved with substance for at least three of the past five years, there has been a apparent conviction.
I move we deny the license.
I second.
It has been moved by Trustee Doro, seconded by Trustee Myers, I believe. Trustee Hanson, to deny the license?
Yeah. No alcohol-related. How can you give one with no alcohol and turn the other one down with no alcohol?
Uh, in, I can...
I mean, that's an opinion.
No, no, you're right, and I know that's a very good one.
A bag of worms when you did with the one, but...
And, and so for myself, do you want a response?
No, that's all I'm, I'm just putting it forward.
Oh, okay.
Times have changed, so I'm just saying the fact, you give one to one, you give one, you deny the other one, so...
I think we should make a comment, because I...
Go ahead.
As far as I'm concerned, substance abuse and alcohol abuse are a lot different than a traffic offense. I understand that the traffic offenses, for the one that we did grant, were quite a few, but they were all for the same thing, too. It wasn't like he had multiple.
Right.
It was just for the same offense every time, and it seemed like he cleaned it, he cleared it up every time, but then, when it came time again to register the vehicle, he was either behind in registration or... So as far, to me, the substance abuse has a big push towards a no. A huge push.
But I agree with you.
Yep.
It's just, but it isn't.
Plus you...
So how can you, never, I'm not gonna argue with that.
No, no, we're not arguing.
No, we're not arguing, Dick.
No, no, you didn't do anything wrong. No one's doing anything wrong.
And I put my opinion, and I was told, forget about what happens five years ago.
No, no, no.
It's new one, so whatever goes on, that's why I abstain.
Well, the people have elected you, and you are allowed to say anything for, whether it's five years ago or 100 years ago.
Well, I just sit back, but I just, I make an opinion that I don't know how you can do one and not the other without...
For myself, I can give you my opinion, and I don't want to, I know we're not supposed to restate, I'm simply saying for myself, in the case of the license we're looking at now for Michelle Lehman, continuously, there was contact with police where there was possession of paraphernalia to utilize, or could be utilized to utilize drugs, and most times that was dismissed, but there was the possession of an illegal substance in the car. Just recently, in Waukesha County, there was a gentleman that was pulled over, and I believe he received his ninth OWI, which was, most of them in the past had been for alcohol, but he got an OWI because he had taken morphine before he got behind the wheel. And we have to remember that operating while intoxicated does not, or I'm just saying, it doesn't mean just alcohol. Right. It does mean any substance, and, so I'm just, that's, I'm not trying to split hairs here. In one situation, we have a lot of substance being involved. When referring to the other one, there wasn't. That's the only reason that I'm, I'm saying that, but that's, I'm just allowing people to know what guided my decision, whether it be right or wrong, because it's just an opinion, and I'm only one of seven. It's simply my opinion.
I would suggest also, there's a little bit more currency, if you will. There's a little bit more current nature to these offenses than the related ones in the other.
Well, I just told my, my opinion.
Nope, and you're right. You are very right.
So I don't want to, I don't want to say here an hour and argue right or wrong.
Nope, we won't. I, I won't say anything else, because I already said it, and I don't want to say it too many times, otherwise that kind of goes against our own...
And I don't believe there's anybody here in her defense either, or her, right?
Correct.
No.
So that kind of shows me that she doesn't care either.
So with that, a motion would be entertained. We do not...
You have a motion.
Oh, we do have, I'm sorry. That was discussion, I'm very sorry. You have the motion? I'm very sorry about that. So, that motion was for the denial. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
That motion is carried for the denial with the one abstention. Next item on the agenda, we have the public dan, I'm sorry, we have the consideration of license and permits related to Palmer's tent event to benefit cystic fibrosis, the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. We will have a couple of, I don't know whether you guys want to do these as a group, or we can do them separately. We have a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and a street use permit. Whether we would like to take them separately, I will just go off of whatever motion is made, or whether we want them as a group, because it's all one event.
I make a motion that we approve the event as noted in our record.
I second.
Moved by Trustee Myers, seconded by Trustee Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Those permits will be granted, and the license, the temporary license will be granted. Next, we have consideration of licenses relating to St. Charles Catholic Church Fall Festival on September 7th, 8th, and 9th. Again, this is an event where we have three items listed, temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license, the public dance license, and the temporary operator's license. I will go off of however the motion is made, if it is grouped or one by one for each of those items.
I motion to do it as a group.
All right. Is that the motion to approve it?
Yes, to approve it as a group.
The motion has been made to approve. Trustee Doro has seconded for all three of the items, as I stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those licenses and permits are granted. Actually, they're all licensed, I'm sorry. Those licenses are granted. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution Number 709, 2018, a resolution establishing the location for the November 2018 election in the village of Heartland.
I also move we approve the suggestion for using the church for the election.
So this would be all districts?
Yes.
All district, all words, everything here, at the, everything in the village, over at St. Charles Church.
I'll second it.
Why did...
It has been moved and seconded, discussion.
Yeah. Why are we doing this?
It fits.
As opposed to splitting, is it just easier?
Uh, the reason we don't split them, we try not to split them anymore, because when you split them, that doubles our costs, because you have to have a full complement of staff at both locations. So we've been really trying to keep that to one polling place for the village, if we can, and St. Charles Church, as, as Trustee Myers pointed out, is large enough to accommodate the entire village.
What kind of a turnout are we expecting? Huge?
Pretty significant with all of the...
Is that 30% or 80%?
It'll be like a presidential election. Really? Yeah.
I think they're printing 80% ballots. I think the ballot printing is 80%.
With it, it's been moved, did you get the names? With it being moved and seconded, I guess I will throw out, and to the people in the audience also, even though this is going to seem kind of weird, I'm going to suggest to the trustees, to anyone on staff, which, and our staff does a good job of it, but let's make sure to get it on the village website, because this is a change and there's no voting at, this is the first time ever, right? No voting at the municipal building? Is this the first time?
No, no, no.
Oh, this is, okay.
We've done, like, for example, the presidential election was there, and one can always, do absentee voting at the village hall.
Yes, yes. I just wanted, so on Election Day, it's just very important that everybody knows it's at St. Charles. I'm just saying, get it out here, kid people up and let them know, by the time we get to November, everybody should know where it's at.
We'll do our best.
We're a small enough village, we can, well, I'm saying to the trustees and anybody in attendance also, we have the fire chief here, we have the, they'll get the word out. He'll go to order them. I kid, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
With pizzas.
Oh, no. I'm kidding.
That's a different...
I'm kidding, yes. If you order them to support the fire department, those don't come free.
So voting where's that where the American flag is on the ladder, Joe.
Yeah. So uh it that we do have a motion and a second. Uh any other discussion? All in favor? I. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to affirm the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen salt order in the not to exceed amount of one thousand nine hundred twenty tons at sixty nine dollars and eighty eight cents per ton from Compass Minerals of Overland Park, Kansas through the state of Wisconsin bid in the estimate, the estimated amount of one hundred thirty four thousand, one hundred sixty nine dollars, twenty cents.
We don't have much of a choice, I'll recommend we approve it. It um at that rate, I remember when we first voted for this, it was twenty three dollars a ton. And look at it now, it's, so I make the motion, we approve the uh bid.
Second.
Uh it's been moved and seconded. Um trustee Myers, trustee Swenson, um do you want to elaborate on that? I'm not sure where that was go. Well, trustee Myers is.
Well, he has a little bit of history because it's been a little while since twenty, but.
More than I.
It um probably the first numbers I remember were in the uh forty and fifty dollar range. Uh it certainly goes up very rapidly, uh especially this year, I think we took a little bit of an increase because there was such a demand for it last year uh at the end of the season, I think there was a little bit of a supply problem. This is a peculiar scenario, a peculiar situation, uh as I sort of alluded to in my memo. Um the practice of the village in the past, this is uh before I was the administrator, the practice of the village in the past for many expenditures, many of the larger expenditures is that once they were approved in the budget, they sort of went through, they just happened, uh vehicle purchases, et cetera, et cetera. Um I have been bringing more of those back to the village, I've been bringing all of those in fact back to the village. This is really the last vestige of large purchase that doesn't go back to the village board once it's approved in the budget. Uh staff and I have been talking about that and we're gonna kind of try and change this a little bit as a way of making sure that you kind of have a grip on the fact that we're talking about nearly two thousand tons of salt uh that get used in an annual basis, or actually that we reserve. Uh we use actually about sixteen, anywhere from thirteen to sixteen hundred tons. Um and so we're gonna bring this back a little bit differently in the future, this this time, the bidding's been done, the the staff had made the order as we have always done. I think next year, what you'll see is probably around February or March, you'll see actually uh the documentation to approve making an order. Uh and you'll see that material, you'll see what we've used, you'll see what we've got, and we'll talk about this is what we plan on ordering through the state's project, uh and you'll approve it at that point. And this point would just be a a report essentially because you've already approved the bid, uh the ordering, if you will. We're never gonna get a better price than through this, I can remember being uh elsewhere in the state and getting called from colleagues who were across the cheese curtain, as I call it, wanting to buy it from me because uh they were buying it for ninety dollars a ton and I still had it at fifty five. So it it it's incredible what we can get from the state in this regard uh when when we all bundle together, so.
So it'd be sufficient to say that trustee Myers and saying he already knows we're not gonna get a pr- better price, and as you're saying now, we could go look all day, this is the best price we're gonna get.
We're never gonna touch it.
You know, we're taking, we're keeping it the cheapest we can for Heartland.
Absolutely.
Are we selling any of that to the uh salt?
No.
No, I mean, we we used to sell it to the school.
The school orders their own.
Oh.
And we store it for them.
And that comes to us.
It comes to us and we store it for them.
And then we give it to the town.
Yep.
That's what I was asking.
This does not.
No, I didn't mean the salt.
Oh, I I I don't know, I thought maybe years ago we sold it and made money on it.
No, no, I know we got it for.
No, the liquid, the the brine is different, we buy that from Waukesha County.
Okay, but that's a totally different mixture and.
Totally different, yeah, okay.
This is the actual rock salt, the hard salt.
This is the hard salt.
That we store.
Maybe they mix the salt in with something, or I don't know how they make.
Well, they probably.
Uh yeah, if 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 someone's really called the question, the question's been called, uh any other discussion? All in favor? I. All opposed? That motion has been carried, we will have salt for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen at a wonderful price in the state of Wisconsin. According to some of us.
Are we gonna talk about sand now?
All right, the next item on the agenda is not sand, but rather is a discussion regarding addition of parking space lines to define specific on-street parallel parking spaces in downtown Heartland. So um I, this is just discussion, it's on there, so I think I can go right into speaking with it from a different standpoint. Uh I had requested that this be brought up, um I think it's important, obviously dealing with taxpayer dollars, that we look into dollars on this, um I don't, anybody that has any input, I'd be eager to hear from the board, I think it is a good idea, I've heard from multiple businesses. Uh it's not that putting the parking lines in that makes spaces for the vehicles. Technically, if you had all your vehicles parked bumper to bumper with just enough room, say a foot and a half in between each one or even a foot, that would be the most efficient way of doing the parking. However, you get many cars that just pull up where you may have forty two feet of parking and they park right in the middle, which eliminates any parking in front of that car or vehicle or any parking behind. And with that, uh by going to a more organized fashion, though there may be certain times where it limits that we are short two or three or four cars that night, we will consistently be able to have the same amount of parking in that general area, that's the reason that this was originally brought up. Hopefully, even though we're going into discussion, I don't believe it is outside of the bounds of law that if it were brought up for um a motion, correct me if I'm wrong, if it were brought up for any action, is that eliminated because it says discussion only?
Um probably not.
But there's a chance, because we can always hold it over, but the idea is moving towards us finding a bid, in fact, with us having DPW here, the administrators here. I I'd like to see us get a bid on whether, what's the cost? Uh whether it be the total cost to having DPW do it, or if it is a private contractor, uh so we send it out to the private market. I'd like to see us get something so we know what the cost is and then obviously in front of our um out in the open here, we can decide on whether or not that's something that best suits Heartland and whether the taxpayers want to pay for it.
Could you tell me exactly what areas you're talking? Um I I assume North Avenue is a certain point.
Uh originally, the idea of myself looking into it, I had thought of looking into the areas that at least wrap around from our main busy area from Sitco all the way down to the corner of what would be Cottonwood, Capital, and then I believe in uh north of that is North Avenue. And north of that is North Avenue, so the intersection where the clock, the rotary clock is uh right by outside of the BP, uh all the way up to Sitco and potentially all the way down um to Enters. However, that is simply up to the board and and what they decide, so it's not like.
Would you go along with the railroad tracks and so?
I I had thought of that also, that's what I'm saying, as a board, we would need to decide that. You know what I mean? I don't, the only reason I said towards Enters is because once you get past Enters, there's not a lot of times I see a parking issue at the same time, and and maybe there, no, chime in if I'm wrong.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
Past my house.
It would look silly if you just, I think, just go to the railroad tracks, because it would make it.
I've spoken down to the railroad. I call our police department at least, you know, three, four times a month.
Okay.
Because I've got people actually parking in my driveway in front of it.
Gotcha.
Because there are no lines, there's, they just park and then whatever's closer to Enters' front door, they get out and walk.
Right.
And there's been times where I can't even get in my driveway.
Okay, and Enters are the parking lots, so it should be popping in that lot.
If we're, if we're gonna do it, we gotta be consistent to the village, don't, you know, pick and choose what streets we're gonna do.
I was just trying to save us money, I do, I wasn't trying to pick and choose, I think you guys are right, down to the train tracks, that's the whole business improvement district for the most part, that's correct.
Two bids.
I'd, I'd like.
You know, break it up, one bid.
Would it be possible?
Just downtown and one bid for the extended streets.
Oh.
As the administrator.
Two alternates.
Yeah, two, an alternate bid.
And is this even realistic and possible?
Sure, is it realist- realistic, sure, I mean, I think that we're we're looking at, as I mentioned, I think I put it in the email or in the uh packet, that uh staff was looking at getting some pricing on that, we haven't been able to get that yet, but we've been looking at getting some pricing to have it done by a contractor, done in epoxy so that it'll last a while.
Mm-hmm.
Um and be there.
Doing it the right way.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So we're we're, we'll get those prices and and especially now that we know kind of what the realm we're gonna talk about, we'll put some more effort into it and and zero in on those numbers, you remember I put in my email somewhere from a hundred and fifty five to a hundred and sixty? Uh that's basically scaled off of um.
That's the parking spaces.
Parking spaces, uh yeah, right, I'm sorry, parking spaces. Um based on scaling off of a GIS map, so that's just estimates. Uh it's hard to, when you're looking at that map, to measure four feet for a driveway, for example, but trying to identify what that might be.
Yep.
Um we'll, we'll try and get a pricing for that and at minimum, we'll have that for budget time, I don't know that we'll get those pounded in yet this year, but we'll try and get that together and uh have that matured.
Okay.
If that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, probably, I think that it'd be safe to say that this would not be something that we'd be able to rush through this year, but we can get the numbers to decide if it's something that probably would be in the spring, I would think you can't paint them in the freezing.
Our DPW doesn't do that?
Well, no, they could, but it might be cheaper to, if it's, I mean, it's, I mean, you're talking about really, uh those guys are uh I mean, they're very, what's the word I'm looking for, they're technical and they're, well, no, they're, they're technical in what they do, they know the water well, they know a lot of different things that are going on in the village well, and they're paid as such. And yes, we actually could have them do that, however, based on the cost for their specialty, it might be less expensive to have it subcontracted out, if it's not, obviously, we would utilize them if possible.
Can I comment on? We do paint lines and stop bars every year, but if you do think about going to like an epoxy, which we don't spray, which contractors do, they last every three years, so you don't have to do them every year. So longevity will be better.
So what Dave is saying is that we, because we just use regular paint, uh they don't last as long.
Yep.
Um and that's, while we certainly have the technical ability to do it and and the capability of doing it, it would be a different product, is what I was talking about. And I think we'll go both ways, we'll see what it's.
Yep.
You know, how it looks.
And I think what we need to look at also is the the length of these parking spots, stalls that you need. Because if you make them for a suburban, I, you could fit a car and a half in.
Right.
One of them stalls.
Right.
So that's what we'd have to look into, too.
Right, that's, and that's where I kinda, not kind of, that's where I'm leaning on staff and leaning towards the expertise of
Sure.
how that's done, I don't know if there can be certain areas where maybe the spots, I I don't know, are you all having the same spot, that's where I want staff to look into with the administrator and DPW.
So, to that extent, we will look at it, I did put a document on your your table tonight, and really, the second page of that is, is the most operative piece. That's the current MUTCD, which is the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, I, you've heard us talk about that before sometimes. But that second page is the one with the graphing on it of of sort of what parking spaces could and should look like, and there's some pieces of information there. The distance behind crosswalks and the distance from driveways and fire hydrants and things like that. But there is a recommendation in there uh of of spaces being anywhere from twenty two to twenty six feet long. Twenty six is pretty long, twenty two is even feeling kind of long, you'll notice I put in my memo twenty. Um we'll have to decide that ultimately and decide how we want to handle some of that uh some of that spacing, so we'll look at that in detail if this is important.
How long does Mike's truck?
Well.
How.
Our trucks, our trucks are almost identical and they're almost twenty feet long.
Right, I think nineteen something.
Um if you look at down, if you drive through downtown and look at the clients at Palmer's Zesties at night, there are a lot of Suburbans, a lot of Escalades.
Right.
Lot of big SUV vehicles. Um I don't think we should have spots that are twenty six feet and then some twenty feet, I think.
Have all consistent.
The little cars are gonna park in the big ones and then, you know, I think they should all be consistent.
Yep.
But I think they should be on the bigger side to accommodate the the bigger vehicles.
Sure.
Not just because I've got one, but because I think there's a lot of people that do have them that use the facilities downtown.
Right. And along with all of this, and I think that's a good point, I think they do need to be uh consistent and you had, so I alluded to, originally, I was like, oh, maybe different sections, I'm like, that would be crazy. But along with this, I hope that the public realizes as they're watching or as they're in attendance that uh the village of Heartland and Donna, uh trustee Doral has brought it up many times for the last few months, we are trying to address this parking issue, there is an issue, the residents have said there is. We are collectively trying to address it, meaning staff and this board are trying to address it. We are, uh we have new signs that we're looking at, that one is not up yet, correct?
Nope, they just went up today.
Oh, it did, okay, so there's a blue sign near the village hall, I'll let you touch on that at the end, but uh there's a lot that we are trying to do that is in response to what the uh our community is saying they want from this board. One of the things that, I mean, and I'll say it, trustee Doral heard a lot in campaigning, I mean, people want a more structured parking as opposed to uh organized chaos. So anybody that can't fit in these stalls, and then there's a lead up here, there is a municipal lot very close by. In fact, there's multiples of them that people can take their cars, trucks, SUVs, or motorcycles to, and they can park, and we have beautiful bridges and beautiful walkways that you can get to the establishment that you want to go to to have that cocktail or eat or connect.
And with the new signs, people will be directed to.
Or a cup of coffee, whatever it is.
Do you want a parking spot for your bear truck?
I do, I I have a, what was that?
Designate all of downtown, please.
Yeah.
Maybe we could spray him with the fire truck.
Well, he just needs a turn in the lights.
No, I would just like to add to the conversation, uh if you go ahead and research this and and go into it, I'm not aware of any designated handicaps parking spots downtown. Uh that might be something to consider, at least add into if you're going to spray uh and and designate parking spots currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there's any designated.
Front of village hall.
You know, other than, right, front of village hall, other than, so, just no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much. Not on the street.
Not on all parking.
No. All right, well, that was a good discussion. I'm glad we had that on the agenda, so no action has to be taken, I think that the only action that's being taken is by our administrator kind of had that up. Correct?
Sure.
And with that, I am happy to uh say that uh we are nearing the announcement period, which means we're nearing the end and we are on pace for something that, I don't want anybody to get all excited, however, I do have a few announcements. Um one of our fellow board members, or a previously fellow board members, who's given a lot to the community in Heartland, Rick Stevens, had some very serious health complications over the last month. So serious that there is, uh we are lucky to still have him here. Uh I ask for everybody's thoughts and prayers um for Rick. Uh over the next few weeks, he is battling something to uh, everything's looking like it's going in the right direction. He is uh healing well, I'm not trying to get too far into it, but I mean, it was no doubt a near-death experience, we're lucky to have him. Um for three weeks, he went through something where it was day to day, hour to hour, not knowing if his wife Darlene would have him the next minute. So he has made it through, he is back home. I have spoke to him, but I ask for everyone around the entire village and the people here on this board, on staff, our fire department, our police department, to offer your thoughts and prayers for Rick um for his speedy recovery and good health. Uh and while I'm mentioning past board members, for any of our board members or our past president, I think it's also good for us to keep those people in our thoughts and prayers, that they continue their good health and hopeful good health and and enjoying the summer and and the weather and life itself. Uh other than that, I do not have many other announcements, other than staff is looking into parking and uh we will be touching base with staff, I'm gonna say this as an announcement where the board will have to kind of decide what direction we want to go on a previous item of the community center, this whole thing going on with the church, we are gonna kind of have to decide what we want to do with that, but that'll be done collectively, I'm just throwing it in there, so everybody knows it's not forgotten, I'm done with announcements. Rick, if you're watching, get better soon, please.
We're done.
Quick announcements. Um we want to remind everybody that two thousand eighteen eighteen Employee Family Day is at the Milwaukee Brewers game, take me out to the ballgame. That's Friday, September seventh, uh it's open to village employees and family members, it's a very um great event, tailgating, it's ten dollars per person. Um it's great, uh great thing, tailgating, food and beverage, uh you do have to bring your own alcohol. Uh like to recognize and thank Dave Cox for six years of service here to the village of Heartland, if I'm correct, that anniversary day today?
Friday.
Friday is, was?
Friday was.
Friday was six, I'm sorry.
Friday was the anniversary, and we got him nothing, no cake, no anything, so at the next meeting, I'd like a cake here, please. I'm serious, I don't need to eat it, but at least something, a cup. I'm serious. I don't need to eat it, but at least something, a cupcake, something. Six years is a long time.
We're also doing Family Day at the county fair on July 21st, which is also the, uh, street dance here, so you could spend the day at the fair and then come wind down here at the street dance in the evening. There'll be some fire department demonstrations during the demolition derby. We'll be doing some extrication demonstrations. And I wanted to give you an update on June fire and EMS calls. Uh, fire, if you've heard a lot of sirens, it's because the fire department has been busy. Uh, finished up June with 60 EMS calls and 28 fire calls. So they've been very active. And I wanted to announce, uh, one of my lieutenants, Eric Schlelein, will be unveiling his second book this Wednesday at the library, 6:00 PM, called The Dim White Light, another Civil Era book. And then last, I was able to enjoy a wonderful, uh, farmer's market on Sunday, yesterday. And was wondering if there's a way that we can support and advertise that with some type of a sign, signage down at the railroad crossing or that says, hey, it's every Sunday for people that drive through during the week and see, you know, if you don't drive by on Sunday, if you drive by on Sunday, you might see it there, but if you drive by every day, you might not even know that it's there. So I don't know if there's any signage that we could put, uh, maybe the bid, bid could do or, uh, the bid, I'd like to remind that, uh, village of Heartland does extend to the south, not only up east on East Capital. So uh, this is a village-wide entity and, uh, all streets should be looked at downtown to encourage business.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea that Dave brought up about the farmer's market.
Sure.
It would have to probably come in front of the board, but you could definitely do it. I don't know if it would have to or not. If it doesn't, then that would be.
Just something to promote it. We can get, I'll work on getting in with Kinsey and Heartland Happenings and, you know, a lot of people come down there. It's, it's a really neat event.
Sure. There, there's a way too that, um, we had talked about that if Heartland doesn't have the funds to pay for it, we can all get together.
Sure. And pay for ourselves. We can reach out to the bid or Dave can reach out to the bid and we'll, yeah, we can come up with something.
We just need a location to put it in that's on him. Near there, the, say, hey, here it is.
Sure. Perfect.
Excellent, that's it. Thanks. See you at the Brewer game.
When's breakfast? When's the pancake?
Pancakes are October. Blood drive and, uh, pancakes will be coming up October 11th, I believe it is.
Mark it on your calendar.
Well, I'll have your special chocolate chip pancakes for you.
Any other announcements?
You alluded to it earlier and I'll go quickly. Uh, you mentioned the parking sign in the back.
Yep.
Uh, on Haight Drive here by the lib, by the north end of the library are two different kinds of signs. The one, the last one came in today for parking. It's the, the white with the green lettering and the blue, uh, lettering, uh, blue sign with the white lettering. So those are out there now, so if you want to take a look at those.
Take a look at them, check them, offer your feedback.
Yep, public as well. Offer your feedback on which draws your eye better.
Yep. Any others?
Well, we're talking about signs. If we could, trim the bush back in front of Senior Tomas or the tree so we can see the parking sign there that does exist.
Okay.
Because it's almost non-existent.
You can call DPW and let them know they will take care of that.
This is the phone call.
Yeah, this is a phone call.
Hello? DPW?
Any other announcements? With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
Thank you for being here.